All right. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, October 8th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I call the meeting to order. Start with roll call on the left.
Frank Billen, ARH.
To Gary Dean, Kent Missamaker Harris. Carla De Stradis.
Katie O'Neil.
Ryan Wright.
Sharon Keller.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, and I am appointing Kathy Missamaker Harris for John Meyer. Starting with public hearing, item A, 24-14 SP of American Industries requesting a modification to an existing earth excavation permit to add a portable screening plant at 1260 Norwich Road, Assessors Map 5, Block 3, Lot 1, RA 60 zoning district. Do we have someone speaking for the applicant?
Madam Chair, my name is Paul Sweet, 260 U. Road, representing America tonight. If you have it for you, I know that we need another map to look at. What we're requesting is modification of our permit. A couple of years ago, we were granted a permit by the board, and we need to put a portable screener to make sand. This is not a crusher, it's a screener plant to make sand. And it's not the biggest screener plant in the world. It's kind of a, actually, I don't get to turn it too closely, but you can find it. But anyway, it's in the red, it's in the red box, and, you know, we're not, we're asking for this authority to be able to do it, but where you locate it, you know, it's up to you how you want to locate it. It's a portable screener, by the way. This is not a permanent structure, it's on tracks. And so, you gotta go 100 feet one way, or 100 feet the other, whatever you think, but obviously, the big issue we have, we need to make sand, we need to make sand quick, and we weigh it a couple of months down. And that's that. If you have any questions, bud, I'd be more than happy to tell you answering.
What is the expected timeline of the need to have the portable screener? Is it expected to go through, hold on, is it expected to go through the entire phasing of the project, or just one specific phase?
If, listen, if we can, no, it's not going to go through the whole, no, no, it wouldn't be right to say it would be, we got a permit, so when that permit come due, we gotta come back to see you all again, right? And maybe on that new permit, might ask for a request of time. But what the owner told me was, you know, we wanted to put it in for three or four months. And so, that was, that was the issue. So if, 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 how are my words, my request is that I believe that we were granted a three-year, it was different than the normal five-year. So I think next year, we're due to come back. So if we could, if we could get authority to use a screener plant in there, to screen sand, and I would ask at least until we have to come back.
Ryan, could you verify, when is the end of their current permit?
I'd have to check when the permit expires, but it was a three-year.
Okay. And then, when we make a modification, it would be through the end of the current permit, right? It wouldn't be a lesser period of time?
So if you grant this, yes, it runs for the life of the department, which I think expires next year, possibly the year after. But this is a little bit different operation, where they're trying to prep the site for business to commit. They're trying to go as quickly as possible.
Great. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or a question on this application, this is your opportunity. Is there anyone in the audience with a comment or a question? Any board members with comments or questions? Anything else from staff?
I just had a couple of commissioners approve, let me go over.
During deliberation. Yep. All right. Hearing and seeing no other comments or questions, I'll entertain.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion by Frank to close public hearing, second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B, 24-11 TA of the Plainfield Planning and Zoning Commission, submitting a text amendment to Sections 13.7.2 and 13.32.2 of the zoning regulations pertaining to commercial EV charging stations. Do you want to give the summary of that, Ryan?
Sure. So we implemented regulations on electric vehicle charging stations a couple of years back. We weren't sure what to expect, we saw a lot of problems out in California, the long lines and traffic tie-ups. We did not see the same volume of electric vehicle sales here that they saw in the west. So we had designed the regulations with precautions, where each charger had to have two parking spaces reserved, just to make sure that we have plenty of parking for them. And so, we haven't really had anybody that's been able to come in and get approvals through the commission. So we kind of scaled it back a little bit. One of the short of it is for up to two charging stations on a property, on an existing commercial property or industrial property, the zoning officer can approve that. And each charging station can service up to two vehicles at a time, so up to four spaces being used for electric vehicle charging, as a matter of right through the zoning officer, provided that there are already existing parking spaces and existing use on the property. If somebody had a vacant property, and they wanted to put a couple of charging stations on, they'd have to come to the commission because they're establishing new use. If they wanted more than two charging stations, they'd have to come to the commission. So that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone with a comment or question on this application, this is your opportunity. Any questions from the board?
Ryan, do we have any residential EV?
So a lot of residential has been approved through the building department.
You have?
Yeah.
Resident, I'm just curious, because I don't see too many.
We have an apartment standalone, outside standalone, that houses, now specifically before that person's use, but the building department has approved it for a variety of stuff.
I'm just curious, because I don't know what the use of EVs around here is, and I don't see them too often.
You don't see too many, but there are some around.
I do know that people that have them have trouble, because they have to charge everywhere that they're in their homes, wherever, the trailer.
Yep.
So it's a waste of thought.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on a public hearing.
So move to close.
Second.
Motion by Bart to close, second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting, I call the meeting to order. Additions, corrections to the agenda. We have two items to add under new business, item C and D, and I'd also like to add under other discussion of industrial regulations. Do I have a motion to add those items to the agenda?
I'll make it. I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have the motion by June, and the second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Adding to new business, item C and D, under other, item A, sorry, item B, discussion of industrial regulations. All right, citizen participation, this is opportunity to address the board on a topic that is not an agenda item. So are there any citizen participation comments this evening? All right. Hearing and seeing none, moving on to the unfinished old business. Item A, 24-2 SA of custom-built homes by Greg Leto, proposing a nine-lot subdivisions with an 800-foot cul-de-sac road on property located at 0 Spalding Road, Assessors Map 26, Block 10, Lot 12, RA 60 zoning district. Do we have someone presenting for the applicant?
I don't see the applicant here. They did ask to continue until next month, and we have a 30-day extension to use.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to continue.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bart, and the second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, the application is continued. Moving on to item B, 24-7 SPL of Pamela Jones, requesting site plan approval for expansion of employee parking at 131 Norwich Road, Assessors Map 15, Block 75, Lot 4, C2 commercial zoning district. Do we have someone speaking for the applicant?
Yes.
All right.
For the record, my name is Paul Archer, Archer Survey, here to represent them. This property that we are discussing is, used to be housed by enchanted jewelers. And so what they're looking for is now turn over, basically, not basically, now they're a livery service, and they're looking to expand the parking for their cars only. It's not for customer parking, it's for their fleet of cars and done. And what they're proposing to do is expand the existing parking lot, and using a gravel base parking lot, which we're gonna, the gravel, the parking lot would be 240 square feet, roughly 80 by 30 feet wide, gravel parking lot, just extending off the, basically, off the existing pavement, this way. We've turned in the drainage calculations to Ryan, returning the calculations for the MS4, as the site is basically a level site, so the water is gonna go nowhere, being a gravel, seeing that we're proposing it to be gravel. There, we are showing lines where it could house up to nine spots, but of course, being gravel, those lines will not be delineated, it would just be a gravel parking area for him to park his fleet of cars here. It's relatively a simple, easy fix for him to be able to start against.
So the revised plans were given to us yesterday?
Plans were given.
The revisions were given yesterday?
Yes.
Okay. So staff does have a note, that town engineer has not had an opportunity to review this plan yet, in regards to the stormwater calculations. Ryan, internal staff has given his opinion of the semi-imperious area and the suggestion. So it's up to the board if you want to wait for the town engineer review of this plan and continue, or if you're comfortable proceeding with Ryan's staff report and recommendation. So it's up to the board. We can continue to get the town engineer calculations, or go with internal staff's recommendation.
I would go with internal staff.
Can I ask a question?
It's okay.
Think the reason gravel instead of extending the existing cement, the asphalt front, what?
Imperious surface, so then you would have to be more concerned with where the water goes, how you pave the water, and that stuff. So the gravel allows the water to stay in place, get soaked back into it, rather than trying to find a place to put the water.
Sure. I follow that.
Any other comments or questions from board members? The staff recommendation was for a condition, a stone infiltration trench to be added to the south and west perimeter of the parking area, to tie any overland flow into the underground containment. The parking area is to be pitched in those directions. This trench will also ensure, if a more impervious surface such as Millings is applied, the underground containment would still function. The site plan Mylar is to be recorded prior to receiving the zoning permit to construct the parking. I would also add, if it's gonna be changed to a more impervious surface, I think more review would be needed.
I concur with that stipulation, that if there's gonna be a return without following this plan, they can come back.
So from an engineering perspective, whether it's gravel or pavement, you still have the same amount of stormwater in that area. So that's what the one foot of stone or gravel is to accommodate for the entire 2400 square feet.
But you're not speaking as an engineer, right, Ryan? You're speaking from a planning perspective?
Correct.
Okay. Because, you know, unfortunately, you don't have that title, so you're speaking from the planning perspective.
I think I have a good understanding of engineering.
No, I understand, I just want to make sure board members understand. All right. So the internal staff versus the external staff, just requiring.
I would agree that if it is to be changed to pavement or whatever, that the calculations be turned into Ryan, to demonstrate that the provision does work.
And I would say the calculations be reviewed by the town engineer. That would be my stipulation.
If it goes to pavement.
If the, if the impervious surface is changed to impervious, then.
Correct. I agree.
So I would add that as a third condition, if the board feels that is reasonable.
Ryan, what's the town engineer's backlog right now?
I, I know he's backed up a little bit, I couldn't tell you what his backlog is.
But he's always been able to get.
If they're to go to pavement, could they do that willingly on their own, or do they have to come back?
I would say they'd have to come back, because now they're changing it, like, part of their reasoning of this is the fact that they're using gravel.
Right. No, I agree, although, yeah.
Yeah.
My point is, is it necessary to add the third condition if they have to come back for particles?
Well, I don't think the first condition listed would make them come back. Am I misinterpreting that, Ryan?
But you could add a number three of that if they.
If they change it from gravel.
We could strike that, you know, if they go to a more impervious surface, and add number three, that if they do, and go with Millings, or, or do that for that.
Okay. So really, we're kind of breaking up item one then, right? So then, so the last sentence of item one is struck. So then, item three says applicant must return if a more impervious surface, such as Millings, is applied, and town engineer will review stormwater calculations. So since kind of the reasoning not to wait for the town engineer is the gravel, I think it makes sense that we would add that stipulation.
And could you also add that note can be added to the plans?
You got it. Item four.
But you can add that as part of item three.
Okay. Note to be added to the plan. Added to plan. Okay. So that would leave three conditions. So one, a stone infiltration trench is to be added to the south and west perimeter of the parking area, to tie any overland flow into the underground containment. The parking area is to be pitched in those directions. Item two, the site plan Mylar is to be recorded prior to receiving a zoning permit to construct the parking. Item three, applicant must return if a more curvious surface, such as, more impervious, sorry, more impervious surface, such as Millings, and the town engineer will review the stormwater calculations, and this note is to be added to the plan.
Based on those conditions, I would move for a vote of approval.
I'll have a second.
I have a motion by Bart to approve, and a second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Application is approved with those conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item C, 24-8 SPL of Vajiant LLC, requesting permission to construct a gas station convenience store with drive-through and onsite car wash on property located at 340-342 Prospect Street, Assessor Map 22, Block 88, Lot 5, C2 zoning district. Do we have anybody for the applicant? Is it paring now?
I'm sorry, I was writing down.
That's okay.
What, that was, which one now?
Vajiant.
Uh, Vajiant, yes. So they had asked for extension to, or, they had asked to continue next month, and we have a 35-day extension.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to continue.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June, second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Continued until our next meeting, which I believe is November 12th.
Yes, it is.
All right. Very good. Item D, 24-9 SPL of Plainfield Pike LLC, requesting a site plan review for modifications to an existing warehouse facility for parking, drive-aisles, retaining walls, and stormwater drainage, on property located at 113 Plainfield Pike, Assessors Map 17, Block 36, Lot 68, Industrial 1 and 2 zoning districts. Speaking for the applicant.
Hi, good evening. Many judgments on civil engineering, fire department with the L. Huppings, 355 Research Park later in the calendar. We were here a few weeks ago with this application to explain the modifications to retaining walls of this location, as well as the drainage changes during the year. I'm super passionate about what you're doing, I'm gonna say shooting up.
Do we have a larger copy of these plans, Ryan? Do you have extra sets of these plans? My eyes aren't that great, although, you can't read all those little notes.
If I can focus.
Yes, please.
So, so the wall we're talking about, the wall we're talking about is, is this wall here, it's in the north half of the page, or northwest corner of the project. You may recall, we always had a wall here before, the parking was always here, it was approximately 60 feet paint. As we worked with the designer to get the wall in construction, the painted wall is gonna reduce down to 45 feet. So this parking lot, some dropping at 15 feet, we have construction in progress. We would even construct another wall here, particularly, to make up that difference. So what we're here for is modification to adjust retaining walls and the walls. There was discussion on also revising some of the stormwater drainage. This water goes to an outlet here at the front, and then what we're doing is modifying that drainage and bringing it further to the south. And what we're trying is to work with Seattle, and we're going to apply for this application. So Clay just requests approval for retaining wall work alone. We'll be back later date as we work through the drainage modifications and so. So Clay can have just request approval for.
All right. So the application's being modified, so that it is modification to an existing warehouse facility for parking, drive-aisles, retaining walls, but it will no longer contain stormwater drainage, that will be a separate application.
And we worked with town engineer and staff, and the town legal, to separate the two issues, so that we can get approval for the walls, continue construction of that, as we work through the final modifications with the town engineer for the drainage.
Thank you.
This is Tony Faro, I'm sorry, Tony Faro, representing Plainfield Pike.
Thank you. All right. So staff did make notes about the items that have been provided, clarified, and received. They also suggested the following language, if there was a motion to approve, that the approval be subject to the following conditions. Item one, engineering review fees to be determined must be paid within 35 days or prior to the filing of Mylars. Item two, Mylars must be recorded with the town clerk prior to receiving zoning approval for the modifications. Item three, the applicant shall work expeditiously and in good faith with staff to revise and/or redesign the stormwater swale level spreader proposed to the north and west of the westernmost retaining wall, and resubmit a revised development plan to the commission for approval. A zoning permit or certificate of zoning compliance may be issued to allow for the construction of the retaining walls, but not for the construction or use of the spreader and related drainage system until it is approved by the commission. Any other items or questions for the board on this?
I have a question on stipulation three. If we're separating these two issues, is three still a necessary requirement? The focus of our efforts tonight is the retaining wall. Am I making it a condition that of approving the retain wall if they have to do the water work, even though it's gonna be pitched here as a separate individual change?
So because it was submitted with that, that's why the additional stipulation has to be added, is that right?
It was submitted with modifications to the drainage that are completely independent of the retaining walls.
Okay.
Item number three was drafted by legal.
Okay.
To separate the two as conditional approvals.
Just to be extra extra sure.
Okay. It actually feels like it smashes them together, rather than separating them, but one's to drive together, and they may have inexperience at the legal part of it.
It simply clarifies that the commission is only approving the retaining wall and parking modifications, not the changes to the drainage. They will, and they have to come back for the modifications.
The remainder.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? All right. I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Make a motion with these conditions.
All right. So I have a motion to approve with the conditions, and a second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is approved, and we'll see you when that stormwater drainage is ready.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to item E, 24-14 SP of American Industries, requesting modification to an existing earth excavation permit to add a portable screening plant at 1260 Norwich Road, Assessors Map 5, Block 3, Lot 1, RA 60 zoning district. Any items for discussion on the application?
It sounds like it'll be less truck traffic, is that true?
It'll speed the process, the truck traffic will be the same.
So they'll just be doing some of the screening onsite, instead of trucking it out on-site? So they'll be doing separating. There were two items for suggested condition of approval by staff. Item one, all aspects of 23-10 SP control, with the exception of the screener. Item two, the screener shall be located a minimum of 420 feet from Rude Road and 200 feet from Norwich Road.
I would move to approve with the stipulation that the end date of this modification match the end date of their three-year permit, so when it come back to the commission, both items are up for grabs in that resubmission, as requested.
We can do that, I think it's covered on item one, for all aspects of the special permit.
So it's staying aligned with the original permit?
Okay.
All right. So I have the motion to approve by Bart.
I'll second that.
I have a second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Application is approved with those conditions. Moving on to item F, 24-11 TA of the Plainfield Planning and Zoning Commission, submitting a text amendment to Sections 13.7.2 and 13.32.2 of the zoning regulations pertaining to commercial EV charging stations. Thank you. Any items for discussion on this application?
I would assume that before they just throw them into parking lots, it has to go through some kind of.
Uh, it's subject to site plan review, right, Ryan?
No, so up to two charging stations.
By right.
By right through the zoning officer.
And then you go out and see where it's gonna be, because I was thinking of that busy parking lot, where they wanted to put the model.
You're talking on River Ave?
Yes.
Yeah, so we would have to have an onsite meeting with them to see exactly where they are on the lines and what they want to do.
Right. So it does go through an approval process, it's just internal staff, not board?
Gives us a chance to have some work in. I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by June. I have a second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing and seeing none, application is approved.
Madam Chair, can I make an amendment as a following up to that?
Yeah.
Based on what we just approved, I'd like it noted for the record that this is consistent with the POCD as it relates to appropriate transportation on the 395 corridor, and it is matching to that, I would also move for a new vote that the effective date of such text amendment is November 1st, 2024.
Thank you. I was gonna ask for that amendment, and he just provided it. So do we have a second to that amended? Frank has seconded the amended motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is approved with the effective date of November 1st. Moving on to new business. Item A, 24-10 SPL of Reuben C Cardona, requesting site plan review for commercial electric vehicle charging stations located at 2640 Railroad Ave, Plainfield, Assessors Map 1P, Block 39, Lot 42, C2 zoning district. Is anyone here for the applicant?
No, please. So if you want a little more information on this, this is for the River Ave one, where it's being, I believe that the text amendment would basically make this irrelevant, we could apply for a zoning permit or need to review it.
Okay. So we would just continue, and with the possibility, it might be withdrawn next month?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to continue.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by June, and a second by Kathy. All in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Application is continued. Item B, 24-15 SP, for a special permit, it does require a public hearing.
Will public hearing be scheduled for the November 12th meeting, or the Planning and Zoning Committee?
Okay. Okay. We got a motion by Bart, and a second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Scheduled for the November meeting. Item C, item C, 24-16 SP of Carl Johnson, also a special permit for ADU, which requires a public hearing.
I'll make that motion to schedule a public hearing in November.
Motion by June?
Second.
I have a second. I have a second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, application, public hearing scheduled for November. Item D, 24-17S P of Keith Stobley, requesting special permit for ADU, also requires a public hearing.
Will be scheduled on the 12th of November?
Motion by Bart.
I'll make it.
Second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, scheduled to public hearing in November. Moving on to reviewing and acting on the minutes of 9:10. And I also add 8:13 to that because we didn't have those for review at last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve both.
Okay.
I started reading August and I thought, August is strange.
Yep.
We already talked about these things.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve both.
All right, I have the motion by June to approve both the August and September minutes.
Second.
I have a second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Do we have correspondence?
We do not.
Okay, no correspondence. Report from zoning enforcement?
Nothing to add to my question.
Okay, report from planning?
Nothing to add to this one.
All right, very good. Moving on to other. So we've had the ongoing discussion regarding the gravel operations. You had been given copies of the draft. At last meeting, you spoke about keeping the opening hours at 7:00 a.m. as there are many applicants who have been approved for that starting time. Was there any other items that the board wanted to review or discuss? Or do you want to send those regulations to public hearing?
I would send them to public hearing, of course.
Okay, so I have a motion by June to send those to public hearing in November.
Second.
I have a second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll send that application to public hearing next month. Or actually, do we have to wait for the application? Or we could just send it to public hearing, I'm sorry?
Send it to public hearing, I'll create the application.
Okay, very good. So item B was a discussion of industrial regulations. So I think what we've all learned over the past year or so is that an industrial building can be put in by right with no public notification, no public comment regardless of size. Whereas the commercial regulations indicate that any commercial business, 10,000 square feet or larger, must go to public hearing and process. So what I would propose to the board is that we look at our industrial regulations and put a stipulation in that limits size that can go by right so that the public has opportunity to be notified and opportunity to comment. So if the board agrees with that, then I would ask staff to start that process. Sounds good to Frank. You're right.
I'll second Frank.
All right, so, and I don't think we need a formal motion, right?
No, I can draft regulations. We can draft regulations. For clarity, we're looking to do a certain size of a special permit.
Correct, to make it more consistent with the commercial regulations. Whereas industrial has no size limitation that requires public hearing, whereas the commercial zone does. So then we can bring some consistency